It is officially 6:30. The City of Bastrop City Council meetings... Sorry, started reading the wrong paragraph. "As authorized by Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, this meeting may be convened into closed executive session for the purposes of seeking confidential legal advice from the city attorney on any item on the agenda at any time during the meeting. The City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session or called executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment." It is 6:30, and I'm calling this meeting to order. Tonight, we have with us Ryan St. Clair, and he's been a senior for two days now, so he's a big man on campus. And he is the president of the Bastrop High School Theater Club. And with him is Felicity Clapipson?
Clapipson.
There we go. And she is the parliamentarian for the theater club. Felicity is planning on being a pediatrician, and Ryan is planning on teaching theater in high school. So we are thrilled to have these young people with us, and if you will all please rise, they will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pleading) I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a true republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, and infinite in its essence.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas state and to God, one and indivisible.
And if you will please remain standing. We live in a wonderful community, and we had... There's been a problem with a person who was going to do the invocation, but because of our community, Robert Wellington, who is with Mount Rose Missionary Church, has agreed to do the invocation tonight. He's also a chaplain for our police force. So, Robert, if you'd come forward to the microphone, thank you so much for leading us in the invocation tonight.
Would you bow with me? Oh heavenly Father, it is once again that we come before your throne of grace and mercy to thank you for yet sparing our lives and for giving us another chance. As for gracious God, that you will forgive us of our sins. As also, oh heavenly Father, that you would give our leadership the wisdom and the knowledge and the discernment to make the right decisions, decisions that will bring honor and glory to your most holy and precious name. As also, gracious God, that all things be done in decency and in order, that will bring glory and honor to your name. And it's in your name, Jesus, that I do pray, that I do ask these blessings. I thank you, Lord, and amen.
Thank you, Mr. Wellington. Really, really appreciate it. Okay, we're to one of my favorite times, which is the mayor's report. Mr. Schiff has indicated... Mayor Protem Schiff has indicated that he would like to get home early this evening, so I'm only going to read the highlighted parts. Last time we were together as council, we had a conversation about sales tax and how it's divided up and where it goes. And tonight's topic is hot funds. And right off the bat, people call them hot funds, and not everyone knows why do you call them hot funds? And that stands for hotel occupancy tack... Tax, H-O-T. That's why they call them hot funds. So it's one of the only taxes that we collect in our ETJ. So unlike some things where it happens inside our city limits, if it's in the ETJ, if you're a hotel, bed and breakfast, if you're registered, those of us who think we've signed up for a $99 room, and then when you go to sign out, that number's not $99 anymore, well, 7% of that comes to the City of Bastrop as our hot tax, and 6% of that goes to the state. Much like the EDC funds, there is very strict regulations that are legislated by the state on how you can spend those dollars. So just like the EDC dollars, you can't mix them all together and use them to pave a road on your favorite street. It's one of those funds that has specific things that you can spend on it. And the purpose of those funds are to try to get more people to come back to town and stay and spend their money so that we can get their sales tax and collect more hot funds. And one of the most common things that you'll hear about hot funds is it's heads in beds. That's what you're looking for. When you pay that 6% tax to the state and the 7% tax to the City of Bastrop, it's only your room. So if you had a big party, and you have a whole bunch of wine, and you run up a higher bill, that tax is only on your room. It's not on the other things. So there's your two seconds on hot funds. I wanted to do a quick public service announcement. Boy, Bastrop and fire are two words that get the nation's attention. And I would just encourage everyone, it is August, it is hot, and it is dry. And the last information that I got that... And I'm looking out in the audience and seeing there's several people that might know more about this subject than I do, but I believe that the start of the fire that we had this weekend was considered a roadside start, which means it could have been a blown tire, it could have been sparks from a chain that's dragging the ground, it could have been somebody flicking a cigarette out the window. But my public service announcement to everyone is please be conscious of your actions and be aware, and let's try to not have the words Bastrop and fire in the headlines anymore. A couple of things that I wanted to bring to your attention. Wanted to thank the city manager and city staff. The Fisherman's Park basketball courts are lit up, and there were people really enjoying them. It'll start getting dark earlier, and... But even through the summer, when school was out, there were a lot of people really taking advantage of the... And I appreciate the city manager and staff getting that done. On August 10th, we had our first joint workshop. The council has committed to meeting with each of our boards and commissions to make sure that we're all on the same page. And we did our first one on August 10th with the Planning and Zoning Board, and I think our next board is going to be the Bastrop Art and Public Places. That date has not been set, but it will be in the near future. On Friday, August 11th, the YMCA asked me to go out to the park, and we had a function to raise money for Project Safe, which is teaching kids how to swim. Not everybody enjoys swimming, but all of us should have enough of an ability to save yourself if you're around a body of water. So I think it's really important for all kids to have that survival skill. If you haven't been to the farmer's market lately, I went on August 12th. It's great. Come on out on the Saturday, you'll have a good time. I was really pleased to be invited to BISD's convocation. That was last Wednesday. That... If you haven't been to that, you need to put that on your calendar next year. That is really quite something to see. Couple of other quick things. I was asked by Sarah O'Brien to remind everyone that on August 31st at 6:00 PM at the convention center, there is going to be a big meeting about arts. There's going to be a discussion about the future of arts and culture and arts in Bastrop. I wanted to remind you, that is phase two of a project that was started by Signet Strategies. They did the culinary and cultural arts. So they've done quite a bit of the culinary, and so this meeting on August 31st will be the cultural arts portion. So if you have interest, Sarah is really encouraging everybody in the public to come out and participate. I got in two other really fun letters, so I have to brag on some of our folks. There was a woman that came here for homecoming, and she went out of her way to write a letter thanking some of the folks in our Parks Department. She talked about having heavy stuff, and they helped her carry it, and they helped her get her car out, and she just went on and on about our city employees that go above and beyond, and that's what makes the difference, and that's what makes Bastrop Bastrop. So I want to thank Terry, Levi, John, and Joseph in the Parks Department, and I know Trey will be... I passed that email on to him, and just really want those guys to know. It just... The smallest effort sometimes can just make the biggest difference, and it just doesn't hurt and doesn't cost anything to be nice and smile and be polite to people. So I really appreciate that. We also got a letter from a woman from Navasota, and she couldn't say enough good things about Becky Womble, who's the ED for the Chamber, and our visitor center at the museum, and how helpful they were, and what a great time they had, and no wonder everybody wants to live in Bastrop. So I just really want to thank both of those... Both Becky and the visitor staff, visitor center staff. And then a little bit more bragging. Wesley Brandon and the Planning Department, they have been contacted that they won the Central Texas American Planning Awards. Mr. Brandon and I will be going on Thursday. Our comprehensive plan won a state award, so we're really proud of that.[612.82][612.82](Applause) And not to be outdone, Ms. Walden, her organization won a certificate of achievement for excellence in our financing report, and that is the sixth year that we've won that, so Ms. Walden.[629.41][629.41](Applause) This is one of those months with an extra week, so we'll... Our next council meeting won't be until September 12th, and that means that all of those things, those fun things that happen the first week of the month will have already happened by the time we have our next council meeting. On September 1st, the Lost Pines Art Bazaar is celebrating their fifth year, and that still feels like a new building and a new business to me, but it has been five years. And there will also be the First Friday Art Walk. Labor Day, we'll all be enjoying Labor Day on September 4th. The Chamber Luncheon is that first Wednesday. Farm Street, Opry, all the great things that go on in this community the first week of the month. If you have enjoyed them before, I would encourage you to come out. It also starts getting cooler in September, and if you haven't ever done it, it is really worth the effort. Get out and meet your neighbors and be part of the community. So with that, Mayor Protem Schiff, do you have anything to report?
Good.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson? Councilmember Ennis?
No ma'am.
Councilmember Jones?
I will not be at the meeting next month because I'm going to be in Washington DC meeting all the new appointments to the different departments there, meeting with our senators and congressmen. So I'm pretty excited to be able to do that.
So you missed the 12th? We're counting because Mayor Protem Schiff's going to be not available too, but I think we're still at a forum. That was the look of panic you saw exchanged between us. You have a great trip. Thank you very much. I'm sure you will do a great job representing us. Okay, with that, we will... I am on to the bottom of Page 1. For those of you that are reading your agenda, we're at 5A. Receive presentation from and hold discussion with Texas State Park representatives regarding history of golf course to present day and proposed plans with benefits to park visitors and community of Bastrop. So Jamie, you'll introduce yourself, and it's really hard, but speak into the mic or the folks at home will be, "We can't hear her."
Everybody hear me? Very good. Okay, so thank you all for having me tonight. My name is Jamie Creasy. I'm the superintendent for Bastrop and Fisher State Parks, and I'd like to thank you mayor and council for having me this evening out to talk a little bit about the history of the golf course within Bastrop State Park and cover some of the benefits that our new proposed plan brings to the community, as well as answer some questions that were brought forward to the park so we can go through some question and answer period as well at the end. I do have a presentation this evening, so I'll be showing on the screen as we go forward. As the Great Depression era of the 1930s hit our country, we had President Roosevelt, who brought forward the New Deal program to make a huge impact across our country on putting young men to work and improving the infrastructure in parks across our country. Texas in general, and right here in Bastrop, we benefited greatly from that program. Bastrop State Park and neighboring Fisher State Park were built by the Civilian Conservation Corps and the Works Projects Administration under that New Deal program. With that, the nine-hole golf course that was built as an original portion of that project was an original part of the park, an original design to the park. As we went forward, the Lost Pines Golf Club was the original operator on that space for years and years and years. Ever since the beginning, they were the operator and did a lot of great things in providing programs to the youth in the park and providing great golf experiences over the years. As we entered into the 90s, it was a really big era within the park in that both the golf course went through a nine-hole expansion to become an 18-hole course. And in that, there was a lot of things that came out of it in terms of conservation for the park. We are within endangered Houston toad habitat, and from that expansion came some obligations to conservation, and that impacted the management of the park in totality going forward. Another big thing that happened in the 90s is that the park received the National Historic Landmark designation, and that is a federal designation that there's only one... We are one of seven in the nation that has that designation for the quality of craftsmanship of CCC work within Bastrop State Park. The golf course was part of that designation, along with the refectory, the historic cabins, the landscape work, everything that was built out in total there in the park. Following the expansion of the golf course, as we moved into the 2000s, we started to see some decline in revenues and play at the golf club. In order to work with the club, it was very important for Bastrop State Park to continue to keep the golf course in operation. It was critical to the history of that place. It's how the park was designed and what had always been there. And so we worked to try and find ways possible to work with the club to keep it operational. Through the 2000s, Parks and Wildlife did reduce franchise fees for the club twice and started working with them to find ways to do some improvements to the course to help, you know, maybe have the opportunity to improve play and bring more people out to the course. So we funded cart path repairs, a pretty significant capital restoration project to the pro shop. And then moving forward... Did I miss something there? Yep. Moving forward, following the wildfire, we continued to work with the golf club and understanding that they were having difficulty in revenue and golf play. So this was multiple factors from multiple other places to play golf within our community, as well as just a general decline in golf over the years. That's just been a trend in recreation, is that that's gone down. Working with them, we knew that they were struggling, and there were some considerations for closing, and so we put out a request for proposals in 2012 to see if there were any people interested in operating the golf course at that time. After that bid solicitation, we did not receive any responses, and so at that time we extended the contract with the golf club for just a year's time, trying to continue to work with them on finding ways that we can make those business operations work. In 2013, the city stepped up and partnered by providing $25,000 in hot funds through a voucher program that was put forward. And then also Parks and Wildlife eliminated all franchise fees for the club so that they could continue to have that savings, as well as they were in arrears on some payments that were federally mandated through the mitigation for the expansion of the golf course, and so we helped them to allow to just focus on paying those off. We also worked additionally to help them deal with some of the minor repair on some critical infrastructure items that were having some issues, including irrigation system and pumps. And finally, unfortunately, in the end of January 2015, the golf club was... Did have to close their doors, and so then we were moving forward from there, trying to find a solution to that. We immediately put out a request for proposal again onto the market. It was advertised across the nation for eight months, and we did not receive any bids from that. We did get over 30 inquiries, various people who did come to the park to do walkthroughs, have meetings with us regarding what those operations looked like, what the needs were for that space, but we did not receive any bids. As we moved into October, later that year, we met with some of our community leaders, the mayor at the time, the senator, the representative, and county judge, and various others, to see if there was any way within our community we could pull together to find a way to continue to operate this golf course. And unfortunately, nothing came out of that in a way that we could move forward, and so we did, in October, put forth information that we were going to look at, a planning process for looking at how we could use that space of the golf course going forward. In June of 2016, we did... We were requested to suspend our planning efforts for the city to look at doing a feasibility study on the operation of the golf course, and then that's the month that the city did pass the resolution asking that we reconsider that closure and look for some other options for reopening. Having received nothing back from the city in terms of the feasibility study, we did give a letter to the mayor announcing that we were going to go ahead and continue with our planning. And then most recently, here on August 1st, we were able to put forth a public meeting to present a plan, a public use plan for the space that was once the golf course, and then right now we're in public feedback comment on that. This is the plan. We're not going to cover it in detail this evening, but this plan, which does include amenities such as informal play fields, an amphitheater, a visitor center, interpretive center, and over four and a half miles of hiking trails, is really based on some important themes going forward that are meaningful to both our state and our community here locally. And the things that we looked at in doing that was first and foremost in honoring our heritage. So obviously, being that we're a national historic landmark there at the state park of national significance, that is very, very important for us to continue to honor and share with our community and with our greater state of Texas as a state park. Part of that story, very much integral to that story, is the work of the Civilian Conservation Corps and the WPA, and that being also the golf course and what that space was used for in this community for so many years. So this plan reaches out to honor that heritage and make sure that we are sharing that through the experiences that people have or will continue to have in that space, as well as through interpretation within the visitor's center of that. We also have a lot of importance on conserving what is special about the nature that we have here in Bastrop. So the lost pines, right? This is an identity for our community, and we are charged at the state park with conservation of that ecosystem and conservation of what makes, you know, those lost pines great with the trees and the grasses and everything as a part of that. And so it's really important that we can continue to restore the place and keep the place that will... That has brought people here for generations and will continue to bring people here to Bastrop. Additionally, we wanted to really focus on connectivity in this plan, not only within the park. And as you can see on this presentation, the golf course area we're talking about is right here, and it's a little hard to see, but all these other black lines here are trails that we currently have existing in the park, over 14 miles of existing hiking trails. And so one of the goals in this space was that, as a golf course, it was only a golf course. That was the only user group it could serve. Other recreational opportunities were not compatible with that. And so now, looking at future plans, we want to consider the connectivity that that space can have with trails. And so you can see how important that that area right there serves with connecting the rest of the state park with the city itself. And so without the ability to have trails in this space, it provides a barrier to that connectivity that we're all working so hard for. And I know the city along with... Is working very hard to work on a connectivity plan right now and moving that forward as a priority, and so we'd love to be a part of that and continuing to offer just miles and miles of trails that we have in this community. Also, as a note, you can see the land on the north side of the park here that is not currently open for public use, but in the future, we will be looking at a plan for that space as well, which will also likely include many more miles of trails. And so it just continues to add to that bigger connectivity for our community. Another item that we really considered in this plan was looking at identified gaps. So these are the things that we know are missing, right? What are the gaps out there? And this is everything from recreational gaps within Texas to gaps within our community to gaps we know within the state park that we operate on daily that we know we could serve our customers better if we had them. And so looking at this, you can see, this is the Texas Outdoor Recreation Plan 2017, which actually hasn't been published yet, but this is the data coming from it. You can see walking for pleasure, a few other things like fishing, visiting nature centers, and attending... Seeing historic sites are items that are all ranking really high for Texas residents on things that they do outside, and so we want to consider that when we plan. And as a part of that survey, they asked, "Which outdoor recreation opportunities does your community currently lack, or would you like to see more of in your community?" And as you can see, the outstanding answer there is trails or places to hike and bike. So those are huge points for us to note in our planning so that we can make sure and tie into those needs that users are identifying. Additionally, here with the planning that the city has done on the Parks and Open Space Master Plan, hiking and biking trails was the top requested facility type with over 90% of the respondents agreeing or agreeing strongly. Also, I don't have it noted on the presentation, but on the programming side of things, outdoor education programming is high on that as well, which our plan fits into nicely with interpretive centers. So the last thing that's really critical to what we were considering within our plan is just the obligation. So of course, we would be remiss in any plan in doing that planning to not think about the obligations that we have in place, that we have to stay true to, and the parameters that we have to work in. And so just to share some of those with you, of course, where the park is within the endangered species designated critical habitat for the Houston toad. We are a national historic landmark, which I touched on. Following the expansion of the... Or as a part of the expansion of the golf course, in order to be able to do that, we did go get a biological opinion from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and part of that led to certain parameters that had to be followed in order to do the expansion, as well as a memorandum of agreement with the National Park Service, the Texas Historic Commission, and the National Advisory on Council for Historic Preservation. So both of those documents give us some very specific items that we have to follow in perpetuity in managing the park. So just some general benefits of our proposed plan. I think the big picture here on benefits across the board is that we... This will provide an improved experience for our park visitors and just a better quality of life for our citizens of Bastrop. And I think that's the critical thing to note there is just continuing to add to that quality of life for the citizens here. The park has always been a critical piece of this community, just tied in very closely, and so we want to continue to complement that. The golf course area, being able to go with the plan that we've had, has a lot of complementary recreation opportunities for diverse users. As I said, it would open it up to multiple recreational uses instead of just the one. It provides immediate access to nature for our community. As we all know, Texas is a very privately land-held state, so 97% being in private hands, and so what that does is make it very challenging for many Texans to get out to a wide-open space and get out to nature and watch wildlife and just disconnect and recreate themselves in that space. And so the fact that we have a state park right here in the community where people can do that is huge. Other people in the state have to travel here to do that in our state park, and so we have it right here, and so that's really important. Restoration of the lost pines, again, touching on just keeping that identity within our community. Also, part of this restoration, and that we're going to be replanting grasses and trees, will provide some of that visual and auditory buffer for the two highways that flank the park. We talked about connection of the City of Bastrop to the trail network and other park amenities such as the swimming pool. So the YMCA operates the swimming pool within the state park. It is really our only big community public pool, and so having a way to get from town into the park, go swimming, and back down is a huge benefit. It also provides the users that come in from out of town and camp in the park the opportunity to have direct connection with the city through hiking and biking. So now, we can, you know, sell to those customers even more to go down, check out our art, visit our restaurants, and be a part of this community, and there's easy and great ways to do that. Additionally, I'd add some opportunities for special events. We get regular requests to have running events, 5Ks, various events in the park, which we struggle a little bit to offer because we have very narrow roads. We have to close them, and then campers can't move around, and so this will offer a lot more opportunity to have those kind of events, as well as commu... Oh, and speaking of, we already have... BISD has their cross-country meet already scheduled for October to use that trail space within the state park, so we're reaching out to our local youth as well. So we're reaching out to our local youth as well. Also, community events. Just yesterday, everybody viewed the solar eclipse. We had about 400 people in the state park yesterday out to learn about and get to experience the solar eclipse. And so having the space and the facilities to facilitate those kind of events can continue to add to those things. And then just lastly, increase economic impact for the city of Bastrop and for our community as a whole. State parks are economic engines, and the more we can provide that facilitates that, the happier we are to continue to add to that. So going forward, y'all, thank you, gave us some questions that we could kind of touch on and address, and so we're going to put those up. The next slides are kind of wordy. Y'all have them all in front of you. There's a lot of words on them because we wanted to kind of provide all of the information, but I'll just touch on them verbally a little bit, but all the details are there in the slide. So the first question being, what restrictions were put in place during the expansion from nine to 18 holes and through what agencies? And so as we said, Bastrop State Park is fully within the toad habitat, has the National Historic Landmark designation. And so with that come a myriad of regulatory agencies and the regulations within that that we have to follow. So as we go through any project or expansion of anything within the park, we go through a review process that often includes a lot of these regulatory agencies. As we touched on, we received an incidental take permit from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service as a result of the expansion because we were impacting habitat. And so there were certain mitigation requirements within that permit. They're all listed there, but basically, it was all about conserving the park in perpetuity for conservation of the lost pines ecosystem and the Houston toad. There are some very specific stipulations regarding golf course management in there, including integrated pest management. And then also requirement for us to make sure we're providing education programs on the Houston toad within the park as well. Another one with the MOA, the specifics that came out of that is that the CCC Pro Shop was to be used as a visitor's center to provide that programming on the toad and the CCC and the lost pines ecosystem. Additionally, one of the items on that is that new greens and fairways, when they were built, would be within the existing golf course space, designed naturally and screened, and no driving range within that as well. So that is just, as we go forward, if that were the direction we were taking, these are some of the parameters we would have to work within. And then also, a removal of some of the nonhistoric structures that were in place on the golf course. And then just some other general restrictions that impact the operation of a golf course is that our regulations within Parks and Wildlife properties does prohibit public consumption and display of alcohol, which oftentimes is a negative factor for golf courses because they get revenues from that, as well as franchise fees payable to Parks and Wildlife. So the next question is to further address the conclusions of the outside parties to the request for proposals posted by the park, specific to the operation of the golf course, as well as the impact the course has had on the ability of the park to expand its facilities. So again, we did have that first RFP in 2012, received no responses from that. The second one that went out for eight months in 2015, no responses from that. And then again, any impact on the ability to expand the facilities is through those agreements that I've touched base on. Basically, the state park cannot expand facilities within the park without reconsultation from those entities, and so those are some limiting factors. What federal and/or state funds were made available to the state park for roads, bridges, dam, lake, golf course, et cetera, in response to the fire and flood monies that were made available to the park? The fire-related funding, we did receive 4.9 million in-house bill 1025, which is a special appropriation that was directed directly at Bastrop State Park for recovery from that wildfire, and could only be spent on lands or pieces that were directly impacted by the wildfire. And then 5 million of our internal Texas Parks and Wildlife funds that basically were pulled from other projects, so other projects were not accomplished, so that we could get our restoration projects moving forward. Most recently, the flood-related funding, and this is money that was just appropriated this session, bank stabilization behind our cabins, replacement of our dam, and repair of our roadways, all together, right around $8 million on those. How will the park plan to use the former clubhouse? Will you please consider a functioning putting green as a tribute to the historic golf course? So the proposed plan does call for that space to be a visitor's center that specifically will interpret the Civilian Conservation Corps, the history of golf within that space, and the Houston toad and the lost pines ecosystem. And yes, we will be considering the addition of a putting green as a part of that overall plan, so that that can be incorporated as part of the interpretation and sharing of that story. Instead of tearing out the parking lot along Loop 150, will the park consider gifting the dogleg-shaped area back to the city of Bastrop as a frisbee golf park? And so Texas Parks and Wildlife is not going to be releasing any land, and we have received comments for consideration regarding a disc golf course, and we'll be considering those as part of our process. And why has the front of the park been abandoned? So this area, being obviously, you know, the most visual as we come in on Highway 21 or Loop 150, has actually been kind of waiting on a plan to go forward. So without this public use plan in place, it's silly for us to spend money or resources on certain restoration tasks or not, not knowing what path we're going to be going down until we have that plan in place. And so once we have that, we will be able to move forward swiftly. We already have some funds identified to be able to start working on some habitat restoration activities. And so it's just a matter of getting that plan in place so we can do that. We have already planted some trees in that area, and that's why we've not been able to do some big-scale mowing, because we have, you know, thousands of little planted trees up there that you can't really see right now, but working to get some of those established along our roadway buffers. And lastly, I just want to share kind of a visual that we put together of what the desired vegetation will be for that space. So a grassland with pine trees and oaks mixed in in that area, it's going to take us time to get to this. This is a restoration process. It goes through succession, so it disturbs space. And even as we actively manage it to restore it, we're going to go through some processes that are going to, you know, first, we have to kill the exotics that are out there to then restore some of our native species. And so it's going to be a little bit of a process. We'll continue to be cognizant of how it looks and what, you know, our community's perception is of that going forward. And so lastly, our park information is here, and I'd just like to say, I think most importantly, we really did consider, you know, the needs of this community, and we hope that as a park system as a whole, that we can add the one piece to it that is that nature experience, what the state park is there for, that is a little bit different than, but complementary to city parks and what they add. So our citizens can have everything from, you know, a splash pad and a playground to a more natural experience as well, depending on which park within our community that they go to. So I'd just like to open it up now for any questions that y'all may have.
Ms. Creasy, thank you so much. Really, really, really good presentation. Counsel? Councilmember Jones?
Thank y'all so much. I'm just going to let you know I'm on board. I really appreciate all the time you've spent for me to represent our citizens that have just been really concerned about the park. We just love that park so much. And I just want you to know that I'm going to, I'm so excited about two things. One is that y'all are considering a putting green tribute. You know, I think that's just, I think that's just so cool, that, you know, kids might have this hand-ons activity outside like that. And the other, I just have a question. But first, I just want to say, I really want to commit as a council member in doing everything I can to help expand and rejuvenate the friends of the park, so that you guys can get some more volunteers in there, because I know that that would be really, really helpful. So I've gotten that number from Jamie. Thank you. And I'm going to commit to coming along and decide y'all that way. But so my question is, I know that there was a question about the frisbee golf. There were a lot of people talking about frisbee golf. Are y'all saying that you might consider putting a little frisbee golf area there? Is that what I heard or not?
So we're in the process right now of receiving comment and feedback on the plan. And so once, that'll close on the first, at the end of this month. And so once we do that, we'll look at all the comments that we've received, reconsider them, see if they fit into, you know, the plan, see if there's anything that needs to be adjusted, and then go forward from there. So we're not saying at this time that there will necessarily be anything. We're saying we will look at the totality of items that have come in for comment and then go forward from there.
Is there an anticipated target date for completing the dam and the road?
Yes. So if all goes well with planning and design, August of 2018 is the date that we're shooting for to start construction on the dam and the road that goes across. They will still have a road to make that loop continuous again. And it's projected to be a year-long timeline on construction, and then however long it takes for rain to come.
That's good. I know a lot of people miss that walk path that they do, that loop, so that'll be great to have it back up and going again.
Yeah, we miss it too.
Go ahead, Councilmember Jones.
Ms. Creasy, is there a legend for the proposed public use plan? So that some of these little, some of these little guys on here, I go, okay. I know that's supposed to be something, but I don't know what.
I've got big maps I can share with you.
I can send forward the whole plan.
They had big maps at the August 1st meeting, and I'm happy to share those with you and get them loaded.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any other questions, counsel? So Ms. Creasy, would there be anything that this council could do that would be helpful moving forward? Do you need, would you, I need to know if council would be willing to do a resolution of support, or is there something that we can do to help you get done what you're trying to get done?
That would be wonderful. I think any support that we can get on the plan helps us move forward in a way that, you know, is meaningful and can take action on putting something into use in that space.
I'd like to remind counsel that this is on for presentation and discussion, so now would be a good time if you would help me indicate if we have, if we'd like the city manager to drop a resolution of support, or anybody have any comments?
I would agree with that.
Well, I think we have something from our Parks Department. It's going to be coming from the Parks Department.
That's right, but we need to be able to put something on council agenda for council to do that and vote, and we didn't want to be presumptuous till we heard the presentation. So wanting to, is anybody opposed to writing a resolution of support with Ms. Creasy?
I think with the lack of facilities here in our city, any support we can give to the parks, Texas Wildlife and Parks, to facilitate this would be advisable.
Terrific. So it's, City Manager, I believe, we're asking you if you could, on our next council agenda, maybe have a resolution that we could have. And Councilmember Jones, taking your comment of the Parks Department, when we hear that presentation, we'll see if there's anything we want to include and make it an all-encompassing resolution as well. Councilmember Ennis, did you have your microphone on? Did you want to ask me something?
I was just going to express my support.
The one thing that I did hear that I would like to put in the resolution, because I know that it is important, is supporting the tribute green for the historic golf course. I think that's important, recognizing our history with the golf course. So we will bring forward then, on the next agenda, a resolution for y'all to take formal action on. And Trey will be the next item up to talk about input from the Parks Board.
I think Ms. Creasy may have gotten some input. Do you have something you'd like to add?
Yeah, one more item to note, thank you. We will be, after this session of receiving public comment, will be amending the plan accordingly, and then we will have another public meeting as well to share that information with folks.
Terrific. From a timing standpoint on council, it looks like the soonest that we could have a resolution voted on would be September 12th. Is that a problem for you at all, or is that fine for your dates?
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you so much. And City Manager, I know we didn't have it prior to the meeting, but we've got their soft copy. I would assume that we'll post this so the public can view that. I apologize for the public that you didn't have access to it, but we'll make sure that gets posted so that you do. Thank you, guys, very, very much. Really appreciate it. We're now moving on to page two. I'm on item 5B. Receive a presentation on the recommendation of the Bastrop City Parks Board supporting the Texas Parks and Wildlife Plan for the 137 acres in Bastrop State Park. Mr. Jobe.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. What I have here, what's in your packet tonight is actually a letter for the Parks Department asking you to do a resolution, sorry, the Parks Board, asking you to do a resolution in support of the plan that you just saw. Let me just give you a little bit, sorry, Jamie kind of stole my thunder, and our presentation was going to be so good, so mine's going to look a little weak here.
She's just making it easy on you, Terry.
That's right. I should have just gave her this letter to put in hers. We could have saved some time. But in the, what was important, I think, to point out, and it talks about it in the letter a little bit, was 80% of the people that took the survey, and that was 534 respondents for the 2015 Parks Master Plan update, were inter-resident outdoor education and walking trails and things of that nature. We had a public meeting just after the survey was completed, which went up for four weeks. And then 80 people attended that. Everybody was very passionate about what they wanted to see. And again, the Parks Board is just asking for you to support their support for the park. So that's all I've got.
I want to thank you and the Parks Board for holding a special meeting to make sure that you could get this letter written and get it in our packet now. I always appreciate the board stepping up and being very active, and thank you for your leadership with that board. If you'd please let them know on our behalf that we really appreciate their work. I think I speak for counsel. Any other comments? Councilmember Jones?
Well, I just, I wanted to recognize the state park director is here, Brent Leisher. So just wanted to recognize, thank you so much, Brent, for all you do for Bastrop.
We actually have quite a few Parks Board members here as well.
There are, yes.
They can all wave and stand up.
Okay, if you're with Parks Board, at Parks Board, City Parks Board, or if you're with Texas Parks and Wildlife, if you please stand, we'd like to give you a round of applause. Thank you, guys, so much for your work. City Manager, have you got what you need so we can get a resolution? Thank you, guys. Really, really appreciate it. We're now moving on to 5C. Discuss need for an associate judge and request for qualifications process with timeline. Ms. Waldron?
Good evening. So this information is going to be a little bit of a repeat of what we've discussed before, but I know that at your orientation, you were presented with the challenges we have with the court judge. And this is just a summary of, our current presiding judge was appointed in February of '09, and basically, her last salary adjustment was in October of '09. So she has been in place for a very long time. The need for an associate judge, our current presiding judge, covers all of the following duties. She does jail arraignment, daily arraignment, Monday through Wednesday, jury trials as needed, pre-trials twice a month, bench trials as needed, and juveniles every Tuesday. And so what we're looking at is putting out a request for qualifications. The minimum qualifications will be doctorate degree from accredited institution, license at the state bar, two years practicing law in Texas, three years practicing law with criminal or juvenile trial experiences preferred, resident or office in the city of Bastrop or county preferred, must have flexible work hours so that they would be available to cover, and a clear grievance record. We are looking at, this would be a contract basis for the associate judge. It would be paid per event. A half-day of court would be 400. There would be a fee for a warrant issued overnight. And right now, in the proposed budget, we have $20,000 earmarked for this associate judge contract position. This is the milestones for the RFQ, August 23rd. Hopefully tomorrow, we will issue the request for qualifications, and then we'll have deadlines of September 20th for the submittals. Potential interviews would come to you on October 10th. And then hopefully by October 24th, you would be able to appoint one or more associate judges.
So my understanding is that we are planning on having more than one, so that there's multiple people, and you would get your day in court, so to speak. And then it would be paid for that, so that we wouldn't be dependent on one or two people or the municipal judge.
Right, so we might have a pool, basically, of applicants that we might be able to.
Thank you, that's a much better way to put it. Because currently, Judge Hines has been doing all of this.
Seven days a week.
By herself for years.
365 days a year. What we are hoping to do with this pool of associate judges is give the judge a five-day-a-week work week, and have the associate judge alternate on the weekends to do the arraignment, to give her a break, and then have the associate judges fill in on the bench, because periodically she does take vacation and she does need to do training. So this will give... So, this will give Judge Hines the flexibility to schedule appropriately so that she maintains the quality of life, and we provide appropriate customer service, seven days a week, 365 days a year.
Ms. Waldron, thank you so much for your presentation. Councilmember Ennis?
Ms. Waldron, are these, is this compensation been benchmarked? Where did they come, where did the compensation come from?
We found one city in the Metroplex that has this schedule that we used. The reason for this is most cities have them on retainer on an hourly basis with more duties during the week, and Judge Hines is going to retain being the primary judge and sit on the bench, and this is really intended to be a filling. So, the easiest way, we thought, and we're certainly open to suggestions, was to provide appropriate compensation per event. So, if she just needed to do warrant service or arraignment, they knew when they left the house how much they were going to make, and it would be worth their time to be on call to do that. But we got that from one city. The struggle until we found that was, the way others paid didn't make sense for what Judge Hines had asked for. And we were trying to accommodate giving her a break to something that was more reasonable.
Great, I just.
Yes, we did look at other cities.
Okay, good, thank you.
Council, I'm taking your silence as you're okay. Is that a correct assumption? We're not really voting, but we need to give them some direction. Are you all right with them bringing back a formal proposal?
Your assumption is correct.
City Manager, Ms. Waldron, y'all have everything you need? Thank you so much. I'm hoping, and I know it looks like September 12th is turning into a little bit of a big meeting, but I'm hoping we can get this on, because bless her heart, she's no chance.
At this point in time, you won't see this again until we have submittals for you to review.
Okay.
We're going to take this as you're okay, excuse me, tomorrow, the request for qualifications will hit the street, and the deadline would be September 11th. So, I'm sorry, would be September 20th. Deadline for questions is September 11th. The soonest that you would be able to schedule interviews would be October 10th, and we anticipate, I believe, on the 26th, the 24th of September?
October.
Yes. There will be an opportunity, I think, for you to review the request for qualifications on the 26th to determine your interviews on the 10th. That date, I believe, is left off, but we have it planned out and scheduled in anticipation of.
Okay, I was just trying to make sure you had whatever you needed to get this ball rolling.
Yes.
So, we're, it sounds like we're all on the same page. Outstanding, thank you very much. I know Judge Hines is ready for some help. Okay, we're moving on to 6A. Receive presentation on the emergency water interconnect agreement between the city of Bastrop and Aqua Water Supply. Mr. Jobe.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, what you have in your packet tonight is just a copy of the agreement that we would make between Aqua and ourselves and our water systems to interconnect. We've cited some small locations, three in particular, that we've been reviewing and looking at, where we believe we can receive water and in return, give them water if there's an emergency. Just a couple of things that are important about the agreement.
Before Trey does that, let me back this conversation up just a minute. One of the things that we determined when we had a recent water main break, we lost pressure in one part of our water system, and realized at that point in time that had we had some water connections with not only Aqua, but with the Bastrop County WCID, we could have very quickly been able to have some other options about how we managed that. If you'll recall, to that water main break, our pressure dropped, and we had to do a boil notice. We got, it's not that we got lucky, but we had access to water that even though they had to boil, they had water. It caused us, in our debriefing of that water main break, to ask the question of, how do we provide redundancy? And so, the question then becomes, who could provide water when you are the water provider? And there are two. In this case, Trey's talking tonight about Aqua. We'll be bringing back another agreement, should you choose to pursue this, with WCID, so that if you are to the east, I get this always confused, if you're to the east, we could backfill them with WCID. If you're to the west, we could provide water to that side of the community with Aqua. So, just as some background noise, this is why he's bringing this agreement to you to ask for that.
Yes, thank you. She's absolutely correct. It was for redundancy in the system. The reason we wanted to bring it to council, it has some small financial implications, not much, but just in case there was an emergency, there's a duration period in this contract until it's done. We would have to buy water at a rate that someone's going to have to approve. So, we wanted to make sure it was a good idea to bring this to you, so you had an idea to look at it. And just talk about the locations. One would be here at Hunter's Crossing, or just below Hunter's Crossing. If you see the ponds, it's covert to the right there. Let me make sure I push the right button and don't turn something off. Yeah, so this would be covert Chevrolet. There's actually an interconnect there now. What we'll do is make a dual interconnection, so they can receive water from us back and forth. Each utility is responsible for paying for their own improvements, so there's no cost there. What we have done is I'm putting together some preliminary costs, and each site may be approximately $25,000 to $30,000 for the improvements. We'll do those in-house. Depends on the line size and things of that nature, so a larger PRV or something like that may cost a little more. Here is a spot at Loop 150, near our tankyard, where we would just basically tie in to Aqua's, the red would be us, what we would install, and tie back into one of our tanks. So, providing water right there. This one could have been helpful just a few weeks ago. While it may not stop a boil water notice from ever happening again, I don't want to give you that guarantee, what it will do is at least provide water to pressure that you won't have to send out that boil water notice in certain locations. And then, location number three is Highway 95, and near Old McDavid Road. There's actually a spot there with the vault already in place. It was removed when the city actually sold their system to Aqua in 1986 or somewhere around that time. That's when they took the cut in the line, and they sold that portion that goes to the Boy Scout camp now. Any questions?
So, Trey, the way I read the agreement, it's, we could be the supplier, or we could be the receiver. So, it's good for them, it's good for us, it's being good neighbors, and it's making sure we're offering what we have to Aqua, and Aqua's offering what their system to us.
Yes, that's absolutely correct.
So, I looked hard for a downside, and I cannot find one.
Correct.
Okay. Any other comments? Any questions for Mr. Jobe?
I have a question. Trey under 2K, it says receiving utility rates. It says that you're receiving, utility may charge any rate that they deem necessary. Do we anticipate there being a rate change if we have to utilize emergency water?
No, what they do have is a duration term in here that's pretty long, for up to 36 months. That would have to be pretty catastrophic, like the, you know, the plant were to completely burn down or something of that nature. And they'll go supply water, and then it's just required to notify us within 60 days if there will be a rate change. So, the rate change is $3.50 per thousand gallons.
Thank you, sir.
On the rate.
Any other questions? Okay, so as a staff report, there's nothing to vote on. You, council's in agreement, and we move forward?
Yes, ma'am. We didn't put it on the agenda tonight, because we, on something like this, we don't presume to do this without educating.
Getting some feedback.
The community and getting some feedback. But we start with some very basic things, water runs, toilet flush, and we have streets. And so, this just ensures we hedge our bets that the water runs.
That's correct.
It makes my engineering background very, very happy. It's a really good idea. Councilmember Ennis?
Are we bringing it back for a vote?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. And I believe the city manager would like to know if we think it's a good idea for Aqua, we would also like it to be a good idea for WCID unless someone has opposition. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Trey. Okay, we're now on 6B. Receive presentation on the unaudited monthly financial report for the period ending July 31st. Ms. Waldron.
All right, good evening. This is the July 31st, 2017 monthly report. Get to my summary page. So, all of the funds, budget to actual, are tracking at a positive variance. Even the funds electric and hotel, that the percentage of budget isn't quite at our 83% of our completed budget, they are running below in their expenditure, so it's still a favorable, favorable balance. Our revenues and expenditures, these are just comparisons against fiscal '16 compared to fiscal '17. If you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Sales tax is tracking below our budgeted this year. It is above where we were last year, but we're going to continue to keep an eye on that. Let me see. Water wastewater, their revenue is coming in above their expenditures this year, so they're, I've added this, which is a comparison for Bastrop Power and Light, comparison between their revenues and their expenditures, and they're basically right, right on top of each other, so their variance is positive. Hotel occupancy tax fund, we do a month-to-month comparison, just to compare last year, month-to-month to this year, and this month, we did drop below where we were, but we have been, year to date, right about even with last year. Do y'all have any questions for me?
Council, any questions? Good job. Thank you, Ms. Waldron. All right, we're on 6C. Mr. Sean Perkpatrick will give us a report from Bastrop Economic Development Corporation.
Mayor, Council, thank you all for having me. City Manager, the EDC Board did meet in its regular meeting last night, and I just want to give you all a brief update from that meeting and the items that y'all expect to see on the September agenda. The Board did approve and did the finding of fact resolution for the Technology Drive MLK infrastructure project in the industrial park, as well as you'll be seeing an agreement coming between the city of Bastrop and the EDC for administrative services. That agreement is necessary because y'all can't give us anything for free, and we can't receive anything for free from y'all, and the law says that we actually need to have a contract between us for the services that y'all are providing and human resources in the Finance Department with IT. We've not been doing a actual cost reimbursement for the last two years, and we've been able to go through that in a detailed basis and go, here's the time that city staff is spending and the hourly rate of that staff, and come to a lump sum number to reimburse y'all for the next two years. So, that agreement will be coming to y'all in September for approval. The Board did select a finalist for the 921 Main Street Redevelopment Project last night, Stone Cobalt Partners, which is Stone Development and Cobalt Development, a JV that those guys have put together on that proposal, looking at an office over retail restaurant redevelopment at that site. We're going to be meeting with those guys tomorrow to start putting the dollars and cents and the numbers together as the finalist for that project. The Board did also approve the two final big grants, the business improvement grants for this year, and so that fund will nearly all be expended. There'll be a few thousand dollars left at the end of the year. Keeping this brief and short, oh, the EDC Board did approve its budget last night. So, keeping this brief and short, it was a busy day for me. I don't have a big dog and pony show today, so I appreciate y'all's time, and we'll answer any questions.
Made Mayor Pro Tim Schiff very happy.
I'm in concurrence with Mayor Schiff, or Mayor Pro Tim Schiff. I would like to go home early.
Any questions for Sean, Council? Sean, please tell your staff, you guys are doing a great job, and we really appreciate everything you're doing for Bastrop.
We appreciate y'all, and thank you very much.
Okay, we're at Citizen Comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up to speak? Bill Hashkey.
Thank you. My name is Bill Hashkey. I live at 502 Button Wood Street, off of Church Street in Wilson area. And it seems like it's that happy time of year again, budget time, where the council goes over all the budget items, and looks for places to save money, and prioritizes spending. I was very much encouraged when I heard that this body had decided to settle all of these lawsuits that were running around out there before this council came on board. But then, I was a little bit less encouraged to find out that the big kahuna of the lawsuit seems to be off the table. The developer has made an offer to settle this by giving $1.2 million to the city and paying for the lots that are in foreclosure from the county and the school district. And if you play it right, you could literally retrieve most of the money you've spent on legal fees through the inter-local agreement and put $1.2 million in your pocket, which would be very helpful, I would think, around here. The city has already spent a million dollars on this case while at the same time delaying increased property tax revenue on those houses for over four years. And word on the street is that the city and the county are prepared to take this legal action to the Supreme Court. What possible legal principle would you be looking for here? The city manager has said, we need more rooftops to increase property tax and sales tax revenues. But instead of settling this lawsuit and pursuing these goals, we are going to spend untold millions of dollars, more of taxpayer money, city taxpayer money, county and school are not participating, to do what? Stop building rooftops. Prohibit building rooftops. The current city council did not start this. But you do have the ability to end this. And if you don't, this legal action, which I think should have never happened, and is pretty senseless, becomes your senseless legal case if you continue to fund it. So, I ask that the city council protect the taxpayers' interest of the city by providing no additional funding for pursuing this law case, directing the city manager to go for the settlement, and then work with the developer to get rooftops out there. My sincere hope is for a city government that will do the right thing, you know, protect the taxpayer dollars, spend money efficiently and effectively. And I hope you can do that. And another quick thing I want to say is, we desperately need stairs from Wilson Street down to Fisherman's Park. The whole northwest side of town has no good access to the park. We see families walking down Wilson all the time with children, trying to go to the Splash Park. We need stairs over there by Splash Park. If we can possibly do it in this budget, it'd be nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hashkey. I think that's the only person we had signed up for. So, I'm moving on to the consent agenda. Does anyone on the dais want an item pulled from the consent agenda? All right, and we always, is there anyone in the public that wants an item pulled? Okay, Madam Secretary, if you'll read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 8A, consider action to approve minutes from the August 8, 2017, and August 10, 2017 meetings. Consider action, item 8B, consider action to approve the second reading of Resolution Number R-2017-58 of the City Council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving a project using funds provided by the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation in an amount exceeding $10,000. Downtown Trail Expansion Project, and providing an effective date. Item 8C, consider action to approve the second reading of Resolution Number R-2017-59 of the City Council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, authorizing a project of the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation in an amount exceeding $10,000. Economic Development Corporation in an amount exceeding $10,000. Granted in stone project and providing an effective date. Item 8D, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2017-20 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, granting a conditional use permit for 175-foot communications tower being lot 3-A of the Bastrop Business and Industrial Park, Phase 1, Block B, located at 1501 Business Park Drive, within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, setting out conditions and establishing an effective date. Item 8E, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2017-21 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, to rezone lots 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7 of the North Main Edition subdivision from NS Neighborhood Service and O Office to SF-7 Single Family 7, located at the southwest corner of Main Street and Mesquite Street, within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, and establishing an effective date. This concludes the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I'm happy to take a motion.
I move to approve. Second?
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Counsel member Ennis?
Yes.
Counsel member Nelson?
Yes.
Counsel member Peterson?
Yes.
Counsel member Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Schiff?
Yes.
Okay, we're moving on to items for individual consideration. 9A, we will be conducting a public hearing as required by state law on the proposed ad valum tax rate for fiscal year 2017 and 2018. Counsel, I think you got a chart from Secretary Franklin a couple of days ago in your email, and I'm sure Ms. Waldron will show us some information as well. We'll let you present, then we'll open the public hearing and see if we have any comments.
What I have here is just a brief history of assessed value overview. So you can see our pattern trending up compared fiscal year '17 of $825 million to the proposed, well, it's the certified assessed value roll of $863 million for fiscal '18. I went back and looked, our average increase has been 5.4. This is a 4.5% increase from '17 to '18. Tax rate history, I know you've seen this chart a couple of times, but our proposed rate is the .564, which is the same rate we've had for the last three years. The tax rate overview, the property tax proposed is the .564. The effective rate as calculated was .5383, and the rollback rate as calculated was .5733. The MNO rate is only changing by .0003 from last year, and our debt service rate is actually going down by the same amount. The proposed tax rate will generate 221,000 more revenue than the effective rate. And that's all we have.
Of that $221,809, I believe, 150,000 of that is new property?
102.
102?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Ms. Waldron, thank you for your presentation. I'm now opening the public hearing. If there's anyone who wishes to comment. Madam Secretary, has anyone filled out?
There are no forms, mayor.
Okay, I'm now closing the public hearing. Counsel, we won't be taking a vote. What we're required to do is hold the public hearing. So we have met that requirement, and I am now going on to item 9B. Consider action to approve resolution number R-2017-68 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, authorizing Bastrop Art and Public Places to acquire through purchase one permanent sculpture in the amount of $7,500 in accordance with the city's purchasing policy and providing an effective date. Good evening, Ms. O'Brien.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. At the August 2 Bastrop Art and Public Places meeting, the board voted to use some unallocated budget money that they had to acquire an additional sculpture, the "Roar Your Spirit" by sculptor Dan Pogue. So it is up to you guys to approve this tonight, to add it to the city's permanent collection, which would make six sculptures this year. Debra Johnson is here, the chair of BIAPP, to answer any other questions you may have.
I have a question.
Mayor Pro Tim Schiff?
Is there a planned location for this, where it will be placed at least initially?
Ms. Johnson, come to the microphone. They can't hear you at home. Please.
It's currently placed at the corner of Old Austin Highway and Loop 150, and that's near that grove of trees. However, we've observed that it's not a very good location due to birds. And so we voted that, or we decided at our last meeting that I would speak to Mr. Jobe and find another location. One suggestion was to put it, if the convention center was willing, to put it in the portico outside, sort of in the middle underneath the great big fan, is one idea. But if not, there's also a location right at the, on Chestnut by the convention center. We're also open to other suggestions, but we probably won't leave it where it is.
Counsel member Jones? I didn't know if you were going for your mic or not.
I just wanted to move to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion to approve and a second. Is there any discussion from anyone else on council?
I have a question or a reiteration. These, and I think it's more for the folks watching from home, these pieces of art are bought with hotel occupancy tax funds, not general revenue. Correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
It might also be important for folks at home to, we read it, but we, you know, I was reading a lot of stuff, that this is a part of last year's budget that was already allocated, so this is not new dollars in a new budget. This is finishing up last fiscal year budget. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I mean, I'd like to vote to have it out on the street versus under the portico. It's just, I think the more people that can see it and enjoy it, the better, but that's just, you know, I wanted to throw that out there. I think that might be a good location out there on the, by the convention center. Thank you.
Any other comments? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Counsel member Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Schiff?
Yes.
Counsel member Nelson?
Yes.
Counsel member Peterson?
Yes.
Counsel member Ennis?
Yes.
Okay, we do not have an executive session.
I just wanted to show you guys, this came out this week, our monthly characteristic, and they chose to take their picture in front of one of the pieces that you guys approved the last time. So that's kind of a cool notice of our work.
Great, thank you, Ms. Johnson. Okay, we don't have an executive session scheduled?
I'm up for adjournment.
At 7:48, we are adjourned.